All right, all right, I think that thing's on. Hello, everybody, and welcome to the chambers here of the Leon County Board of County Commissioners. We're glad you're here. We're going to go ahead and get this, get this party started. We're going to start with the invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Pastor Michael Bell from New Mount Zion AME Church. Commissioner Proctor, would you like to introduce Pastor Bell?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, members of the deus, Reverend Michael Bell comes to our community by way of Baltimore, Maryland, his previous pastorate. He comes to a very vibrant church in our community there on Old Bainbridge Road, next door to the Leon County Health Center and across the street from the Griffin Middle School. And his footprints have been indelibly placed in our community for part of the tenure, almost two years, which he's been here. And so to some I present, to others, I introduce Reverend Michael Bell, Reverend Bell.
Amen. Let us all look to the Lord in prayer. Dear God, we just, we come before you, God, just thanking you for being God to all of us. We thank you, God, just for this meeting, God. We thank you for all of our commissioners. God, we thank you for their leadership. I pray, God, in the name of Jesus, God, that you continuously give them guidance for Tallahassee and for our communities. God, I pray over our city in the name of Jesus. I ask, God, in the name of Jesus, that you cover our city. I ask that you watch over our people. God, I ask for increase by the power of Jesus Christ. I pray, God, on today for all of the mass shootings and assassinations that have been taking place in our, in our country. God, I pray, God, that we all are able to have respect for one another, respect for one another's speech, free speech, respect for one another's ethnicity, respect for one another's religious or political views. God, I'm praying over families and I'm praying over each and every individual that's affected in those situation. God, ultimately, God, we are asking for peace in our nation. God, I ask that you allow your love to pour out on each and every one of us. God, I ask that you allow your love to rest on each and every one of us. And God, this is our prayer. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Shall we stand now for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Thank you, Pastor Bell, for being here with us. We're going to move on to our awards and presentations. Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If you, if you don't mind, if I could just take a moment of our, of our time, we've got two visitors from a nearby county, Grady County in Georgia.
Okay.
Two commissioners have joined us, Commissioner Sam Kynes of District Three and Commissioner Phillip Drew of District Five. Thank you very much for having us here today.
Y'all please stand. Thank you for being here with us.
Mr. Chairman, these two commissioners have driven from their home county of Grady to visit us here in Leon County in a spirit of cooperation, and they wanted to reach out and meet us and figure out ways where we could collaborate with each other. Thank you very much for your time, sir.
Outstanding. I believe Grady County is where I drive through on my way to Thomas County. Is that correct? Beechton area up there? Yeah, all right, very nice. Well, thank y'all for coming down. Glad you're here. Thank you, Commissioner Miner. All right, so our first proclamation is going to be Commissioner Maddox. You ready to rock and roll? Recognizing Ms. Sandra Horn for her advocacy against gun violence. Ms. Horn, if you could join Commissioner Maddox at the podium.
Mr. Chairman, the proclamation reads, whereas gun violence continues to claim the lives of thousands across our nation every year, leaving behind grieving families, shattered communities, and an ongoing public health crisis. Whereas Sandra Horn is known as a champion against gun violence after the loss of her son, Demario Murray, due to an unfortunate incident. And whereas Sandra Horn turned her pain into purpose and created a nonprofit organization in her son's name to be his voice against senseless gun violence. And whereas Sandra Horn's speaking engagements include Tallahassee Urban League, Leon County Sheriff's Office, Table of Kindness Luncheon, Table of Kindness Community Event at Springfield Apartments, and whereas Sandra Horn was featured on the April 14, 2025 episode of Deputy on the Duty and attended the Crime Survivors for Safety and Justice Group Survivor Speakers March on Washington, September 23 through September 24, 2024. And whereas Sandra Horn serves a source of, serves as a source of strength and support for survivors and families affected by gun violence by helping to spark vital conversations and promote responsible solutions through membership of organizations to include the Council on the Status of Men and Boys, Moms Demanding Action for Gun Violence in America, and Crime Survivors for Safety and Justice Group Survivor Speak. And whereas Sandra Horn is among mothers who have turned personal tragedy into public action, transforming grief into advocacy and mobilizing communities to demand common sense gun laws, stronger support for survivors, and greater accountability from policymakers. And whereas Sandra Horn represents a powerful voice for change, compassion, justice, and unwavering commitment and resilience to serve as an inspiration to others to stand up to violence in all its forms. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners, Leon County, Florida, recognize Sandra Horn for her, for her efforts to end gun violence and work towards building safer, more peaceful communities for future generations. This is signed by the chairman as well as the rest of the commission and attested to by the county administrator. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioner Maddox, for recognizing me for this proclamation, advocacy against gun violence. This is very dear and near to my heart because I lost my son to gun violence. I am now committed to join force with the community and other organizations to help try and bring or stop and control gun violence in our area. It's an epidemic. There's still a lot of work to be done, and I'm here for it. I challenge each of you to stand with me, to try and help reduce firearm access to young adults and individuals who are, who are risk of harming themselves and others. I stand here today for my son. I would like for us to speak his name. His name is Demario.
Mario.
Roe.
Roe.
Murray.
Murray.
Thank you.
Next up, Commissioners, I've got Commissioner Cummings for a proclamation recognizing the 70th anniversary of WCTV. Oh, I'm sorry, I had some speakers. Commissioner Cummings, I'm sorry, go right ahead, and Commissioner Miner. Ms. Horn, I think we had some speakers wanted to say something to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very briefly, Ms. Horn. No, I just wanted to commend you and thank you for your bravery and for your dedication to stop gun violence, and my prayers certainly go out to you. Thank you. That proclamation very well deserved.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Miner, all right. Thank you again, Ms. Horn. We appreciate you being here. All right, Commissioner Cummings, would you like to head to the podium? And anybody joining Commissioner Cummings, I saw a whole group of local celebrities that we all recognized here earlier. Y'all please join Commissioner Cummings at the podium.
Mr. Chairman, I applied for a job at WCTV. They never would hire me.
I feel like Mr. Nukatola needs to lead us off with the weather, let us know how things are looking this afternoon.
Beautiful. We should be doing this outside.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Certainly is my honor to present this proclamation to WCTV for 75 years of stellar service. And so what I'll do if somebody will come up and hold it, there we go. Okay. Okay, the proclamation reads, whereas on September 15, 1955, WCTV became Tallahassee and South Georgia's first television station as an NBC affiliate, marking 70 years today that WCTV has operated as a local and community-based news organization headquartered in, headquartered in Leon County and serving families in 19 counties across the Big Bend area in North Florida and South Georgia. And whereas WCTV transitioned from an, from a NBC to a CBS affiliate in 1959, and today enjoys a significant local presence in the area while providing news and programming with many familiar faces that we all have come to love, trust, and respect, including but not limited to anchor reporters Julie Montanaro, Lenitra Bennett, Zach Dahlheimer, and Madison Glazier. And whereas the WCTV team of journalists have demonstrated a strong dedication and genuine commitment to inform the public about issues and events that impact lives and shape neighborhood conversations, all with the goal to maintain a thriving, informed, and engaged community. And whereas during hurricanes, floods, and other natural disasters, the anchors, reporters, and meteorologists have consistently worked in coordination with the Leon County Emergency Management Team to keep the community informed, to share change in weather conditions, and to provide life-saving updates with life-saving weather reporting, including from current meteorologists Mike McCall, Rob Nukatola, Austin Lowe, and Cameron Aaron. And whereas in the aftermath of many catastrophic occurrences, WCTV has featured award-winning stories and demonstrate, that demonstrate the resilient spirit of the Big Bend and surrounding communities, including coverage anchored by Matt Hoffman, Jacob Murphy, Stacy Inez, Abria Ruffin, and Brianna Shaw. And whereas during times of triumph, defeat, and even tragedy on the collegiate levels, the WCTV team of sports journalists have provided stellar coverage that emphasized community pride and strong support for educational institutions in South Georgia and North Florida, including current reporting from Ryan Kelly, Allison Posey, and Taylor Vines. And whereas WCTV has had a tremendous positive impact on our local economy and business community that has fostered commerce and entrepreneurial growth, and during community drives and fundraisers, many WCTV team members have served as program providers and camera operators. And whereas we congratulate and applaud all the owners, producers, editors, photographers, who have worked behind the scenes over the last 70 years. And we also recognize and remember fondly former anchors and broadcasters, including but not limited to Anna Johnson, Cameron Cummings, Art Myers, Gail Andrews, Shonda Knight, and Frank Renneke, just to name a few. And whereas WCTV has demonstrated dedication to journalistic integrity, community engagement, and technological advancement, and has evolved from this early days of black and white broadcast to a modern multimedia platform that serves audiences across television, the web, and social media. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Leon County Board of County Commissioners, Tallahassee, Florida, that we recognize and congratulate WCTV for 70 years of trusted local broadcasting that continues to serve our community as a great source of news and valuable information. Dated this 15th day of September, 2025, and the proclamation is signed, of course, by our chairperson, Brian Welch, is signed by all of the commissioners, and attested to by our great county administrator, Vincent Long. Congratulations.
Thank you all so, so much. You know, we're used to covering people receiving proclamations, not actually being the people up here receiving them, but I want to say thank you, thank you so much for this recognition. It is truly an honor to serve the people of this community. WCTV from day one has been committed to bringing you not only important information but building community right here. These people do good work, but they also do good works in this community. And your trust in us means everything to us. That's the foundation of what we do, and we're so appreciative of all of you who have watched either for years, or perhaps you're new to town and you're just tuning in, maybe you're finding us on your television, maybe you're finding us on streaming, wherever that is. Thank you. There's so many of us working here, both on camera and behind the scenes to make sure that you are receiving a trustworthy and thoughtful product. So thank you so much, and here's to maybe another 70 years.
All right. I've got a couple, Chauncey, hold on one second. Chauncey, hold on one second, I got a couple commissioners would like to say a few words. Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Proctor, and Commissioner Miner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations and thank you. Congratulations on making news yourself, and I am sure that all the other reporters in the room are going to report on this news. I want to thank you because you're one of, one of a number of our local outlets that do a very good job, in my opinion, of covering the policy and the things that affect people and not the gossipy palace intrigue. We, you know, you can go to your report usually and find out what we voted on that's going to affect people's wallets, what's going to affect their homes, their neighborhoods, and when you're going to see interviews with people who are impacted by it, not just the same people you'd see on TV or in regular news often. So I want to thank you for that because it is, it is a prime example of why we need good local media, and you really do that well, even when you're holding us accountable as news media should.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Commissioner Proctor.
Mr. Chairman, Vince Long can appreciate this. I really am appreciative of WCTV. I like the year of their birth, which they joined CBS, and Vince knows that there's not one single instance, not a single instance, ever had disagreement or run in or disagreed with how I was characterized by WCTV. And, but I won't say thank you because there have been many instances in which I did not like WCTV's coverage of me. There is no single instance. They have killed me, eulogized me, trampled me many times, and it's been fun. But I've never had, you know, my closest friends, I try to, you know, stay with the religious community and preachers and pastors and all, but media folk, you know, you always keep your dukes up. But I love this group right here, and they've been good. And on a serious note, I say to you that in an era, I was going through First Amendment this morning and Second as well, my classes, and we're in a time where there are efforts to constrain your voices, your interpretations of what is news, your reporting of two sides of a story. And I merely pray and hope that and encourage you to stick with the fundamentals of solid and good journalism and to not be affected as many in media seem to be, but to hold up the bloodstained banner of that which is truth in both sides of an issue. My undergraduate training is in communications, so I'm not that good at it, but I was sitting in the classroom with those who were good. So thank you for your years and many more. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Miner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, and I'm glad that Commissioner O'Keefe and Commissioner Proctor talked about the news side of what you all do. Not only do you provide outstanding news coverage and weather reporting, but importantly, you also have a heart for the community, and I've seen that firsthand. Many, many years ago, I used to be the CEO of Second Harvest of the Big Bend, and I got a call from Julie Montanaro, who had this crazy idea of doing a peanut butter and jelly drive for the school kids in Leon County.
I like peanut butter and jelly. That's not crazy.
The idea was crazy, but it was, it was, it was creative. We basically, WCTV, the entire team was all on board, right? You all helped Second Harvest promote this, this annual effort where kids would talk to their parents all throughout Leon County about how they needed to go to the grocery store, get jars of peanut butter, jars of jelly and jam, and bring it to school for the PB and J drive. And thanks to Julie Montanaro and the entire WCTV team. Over many years, it's been tens of thousands of pounds of peanut butter and jelly that has been donated through Second Harvest to children and families in need. So kudos to you, not just for your news coverage, but also to all of you for your community-mindedness. It makes a difference, and we're very grateful to you for the news as well as the servant heart. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Miner. And I'll just, I'll close by saying that I think that it was awesome that the proclamation that Commissioner Cummings gave you reflected your longevity in the community. And also, it might be unusual, but you probably, you've been covering Commissioner Proctor for almost half your life as a station, which in and of itself is remarkable. But in all seriousness, thank you all so much. We appreciate you more than you know, and as I heard Julie Montanaro speaking into that microphone, it occurred to me that your voices resonate in our community, just the tone of your voices, the sound of your voices in living rooms and, and classrooms and, and all over this community. So we're certainly grateful for everything that you guys have contributed and that the organization has contributed over a long 70 years, and we certainly wish you 70 years more as well. So thank y'all so much. Now you can take a picture.
Thank you.
Very good. Ms. Bennett, would you tell us how you pronounce your name? Is that Lenitra? Is it Leonitra?
They so used to working inside that icebox, it probably hot in this room to them.
Yeah, it is.
It's 15 degrees inside.
Nobody wants to sweat on TV, Commissioner Proctor.
I know.
No, he said his studio is cold. He says it's hot in here. It's a bug. Hey, it's terrible. Thank y'all.
I'd be like, hurry up and get the media.
Thank y'all.
So I don't have to sit here in the cold.
All right. Next up, we've got a presentation from the Tallahassee Housing Authority on the Springfield Apartments Master Plan. Ms. Williams, welcome.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to make a presentation today concerning the Springfield Apartments Master Plan. But before I get into introducing the team and making the presentation, I want to start by thanking this commission for your support of me and the housing authority over the past few years. Your support has produced 448 brand-new affordable units.
That's good.
The quality of life was improved for 448.
Ms. Williams, we need you to repeat that for the news people when they're back in the room.
The quality of life has improved for 448 families in the city of Tallahassee, and I personally thank you for your money. Anytime we came to you and asked you to support us, you were there, and you supported us, and for that I am thankful.
Yes, ma'am.
So now we'll get into the presentation. I want to introduce the team. From my right is Ray Kunianski, our developer consultant. Then we have Clint Gilaboo, our developer consultant. And then we have Brian Keith, our urban planner with JHP Architects in urban planning. And then last but not least, Tawana Thompson, our Director of Development for the Tallahassee Housing Authority. So at this time, I'm going to turn the presentation over because Schinkton told me we only have six minutes. So I'm going to turn the presentation over to Brian Keith with JHP Architects.
Thank you, Mr. Keith.
Well, thank you, thank you. As Brenda said, I'm Brian Keith. I'm an architect and urban planner with JHP Architecture, Urban Design. I currently, I don't live in Florida, but I was born in Florida, so it's always good to get back and work in my, my, my home state. I've had the pleasure of being involved in the Orange Avenue Transformation and now be involved in. be involved in Springfield. And my firm's also done the architecture work on the Orange Avenue. So, and I'm going to try to keep this brief. We've had a lot of fun over the, over the last year, more than, we're really going into our second year here. But you've got a copy of the reports, our final kind of presentation, and a little bit of swag there, a bit of bag that we put together for the Springfield Ford. And then also, we're going to email out the full report to, to everyone. It's, it's already available on, on our website here. But we started off in December of '24, and then we had a series of workshops with the community in the Springfield neighborhood, in the Griffin Heights neighborhood, and in early 2005, 2025, both in January and then late February, late March, and then we've been working throughout the spring and summer on refining the master plan. And this just shows our workshops where we got to know the community, creating the community, and then the, the master plan vision. And it really is a vision. It's a vision for what Springfield can transform into, and it's meant to be a guide. It's not an exact master plan. Really had the pleasure in this of, of a lot of interaction with the community, both the Springfield community, the Griffin Heights community, meeting with a number of the county commissioners here, one-on-one. Everybody has been incredibly supportive, Brenda said. Really, the key thing that we always like to do is just listen. We listen to the community, we listen, we came up with ideas that we heard and we summarized them. We came back and we'd have a series of workshops, the communities. And all of these are, been totally open, and everyone's invited, everyone's welcome. It's all online. We've recorded all of these. We have a website that anybody, as we say, anybody can, in the middle of the night in the pajamas, go pull it up and, and see what the process has been. We had a number of just engagement questions. Like, we, we would come up with ideas. Again, we are listening, learning, and then designing. So the final master plan vision here is really one about how can we take the Springfield neighborhood, it's, the Springfield community that's part of the Griffin Heights neighborhood, and how can we reconnect it? And some of the commissioners here really challenged us to how can we, this needs to be, we need to, as someone, one of them told me, we need to go for the touchdown pass, the long bomb, that we need to, we need to transform this community in a way that is transformative and catalyst for the greater neighborhood. So really, this has been about taking the Springfield apartments and creating a way that we could link them in, create a new Griffin Heights neighborhood, community square, really becoming a, a, a park and a, a, a center for the whole neighborhood there, related to the Riley Elementary School and then the Springfield and right around Indiana, Joe Louis, and Callaway. And so we have a lot of pretty pictures. I'm going to go through these really quick because I, as much as I get excited about everybody else, he's got a lot of other things to do today. But really, it's been, we've looked at how we can transform this, this location, take advantage of incredible assets in terms of the topography, the trees, the natural terrain, and how can we link it and connect it? How can we restitch it back into the neighborhood? So we came up with a variety of different, of, of scenarios and strategies. And one is creating a new community square. So we have a new front door, we have a new square. There's already parks, but we want to have a new community focus for the whole Griffin Heights as well as Springfield. Taking the existing creeks and topography that runs through it, transforming it into more open space, community, renovated and revitalized community center and parks and linkages, providing for senior access, that would again be seniors on the park, and a variety of, providing a variety of different housing types. Strongly came up over and over in our workshops that desire for not only apartments, but also the ability to have ownership, that there's a transition, that this is a part of a, a continuum of housing, not one type. And then we looked at block by block, this transformation and things that, working with our development partners, things that are economically viable. Again, lots of pretty pictures, and it's all available, and I'm not going to dwell on anything, but we, it's been a, over a year study of how to transform it, how to weave in seniors where it made sense for seniors. And the gist of this, as Brenda said about Orange Avenue, this is, the existing Springfield is 198 units, and this envisions 540 units. So we're taking, we're taking the existing, creating more, creating more open space, and connecting it to the greater neighborhood. And I'm, I'm going to pass it on from a development point of view and economics to Ray and Clint.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. It's nice to see you again. As many of you know, I retired at the end of 2024, but Brenda was very clear with me that I might be retiring from Columbia, but I'm not retiring from Tallahassee, so here I am. With me is Clint Gillaboe, who represents Columbia Residential. Columbia Residential is the selected developer partner, as we were for Orange Avenue, and went through a very similar process. Ultimately, all of this information is within the book in greater detail, so I'm not going to get into that. What I do want you to focus on for a moment is the timeline of where we are today, how do we get to new development? And as you probably remember, it took several years at Orange Avenue to go through this process to get, then to get to the point of relocating residents and then demolishing buildings and then starting development. And we are still one more phase to go at Orange Avenue to complete the core of the master plan that was done for Orange Avenue. This will be a very similar process. To date, we have completed the plan. We're here as, as part of the final approval process of that plan with the county. We're seeing the city on Wednesday. The Housing Authority Board approved this month ago, I guess. So we're moving through the process. We, we've engaged more Bass as a civil engineer, as part of the procured team. We've engaged the environmental now because we're at a point where we've got to get all of these different reports together in order to move toward financing, demolition, and all of those things. We expect to submit final demo disposition application to HUD later this year, which we hope means that if they're, if they continue to move, as they have, we could have a full demo dispo approval from HUD by March of 2026. So the timeline in the book is a little bit off because the schedule has changed already. From demo dispo application and approval, then the Housing Authority can move into relocation. There are 197 households that will need to be relocated, and while that is on, while that is going on, then we'll be bidding for asbestos abatement and demolition of the buildings, and hopefully we'll be in a position to start relocation by mid-year next year, which would put us into demolition end of year next year. All that is to say, because you know where this is going, we, we're moving forward with the assumptions that we will be able to come back to you all as well as the city for financial support, as you did at Orange Avenue, because without financial support from the local government, it makes it very difficult to receive financial support from the federal government and through the tax credit allocation program and process. And so these, all, all these things work together. So, so that is what we wanted you to hear today and know that we're moving forward. We hope that you, you feel good and positive about the results at Orange Avenue. We certainly do. As Brenda said, Orange Avenue is 390 of those 440-some-odd units that have changed for people and housed people. Orange Avenue was 200 units. It is now 390, and we're hoping to get 120-unit senior deal approved this next year. So we would have doubled the number of affordable units while maintaining the integrity of the site and creating a beautiful place for people to live. That's what we want to do here at Springfield.
What's that?
So that's our presentation for today. Again, we will send out a digital copy of the plan. We were limited in terms of how long we could speak today, and we look forward to work, well, the Housing Authority looks forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Commissioner Maddox, and then Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I enjoyed the meeting with you all to talk about the master plan, and you did hit a home run, score a touchdown, make a goal. With the plan, specifically, I asked that, during our meeting, I asked that Springfield not be hidden, but be the middle or the nucleus of the neighborhood and serve as a force that, that brought people together within the neighborhood, and you have done exactly that with the master plan that you have. I love the transition or the thought that you could, you could move people from the Housing Authority property to, to self-sustaining themselves in their own homes, single, single family homes. That's, that's amazing, too. Everything that I could have thought of, everything I probably said that day, you did in that master plan, and I'm excited about it, and I'm excited to support it, and I look forward to when the time is right, the Leon County Commission stepping up and bringing some dollars to the table to support what's, what's going to become a new Springfield and new Griffin Heights for Leon, for Leon County and City of Tallahassee. I met with, I met with Reverend Bell last week, I believe, this week, no last week. It was last week. It was last week. No, it was this week. Thank you, Javel. And we talked a lot about his, his idea and that they're setting up their, their nonprofit and their CDC, and they would like to be a, a part of, of the solution of re, of rethinking, redeveloping the neighborhood, revitalizing the neighborhood. And so I would, I encouraged them to meet with you all to, to find out what the plan was and how they can be a part of that plan. But I'm just excited. I'm just excited. It's been a long time coming. There's a lot of housing stock in the area that needs to be renovated and looked at again, but I believe, just like Orange Avenue becoming Columbia Gardens was a nucleus for a lot of growth in the area, a lot of infrastructure in the area, I believe that Springfield Ford would be the, the nucleus for a lot of, of change and a lot of growth and a lot of revitalization in the neighborhood. I do caution us, caution us, though, to make sure that we fight back gentrification as much as we can with, with a development like that. The amenities that it's going to create, you can only imagine how valuable that, that area of, of town is going to become, especially being close as it is to FSU and being in the middle of town. So I'm excited. I look forward to supporting it. Ms. Williams, you have, you have done exactly what we wanted you to do. You come in here, you, you renovated and revision, revitalized Orange Avenue, and I told you, soon after, I want Springfield done and, and look, look here, look what we got. So I couldn't be happier about where we are. Mr. Chair, if this is right, if, if you would allow me now to do it, I was going to bring it up during my discussion time, but seeing this up here and thinking about the leader of the Housing Authority and what she's had, what she's done over the years, I would like to ask if I can make a motion for a proclamation celebrating her, her retirement, to be presented to her at her party, her retirement gathering.
A second, Mr. Chair.
All right. We got a second and a third and probably a five, four, five, six, and seven, Ms. Williams. We got a motion and second for proclamation for Ms. Williams on her retirement and her excellent body of work. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Passing unanimous.
Again, thank you so much for the work you've done, and I appreciate this presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We'll see you back here soon.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you.
All right. Our next presentation is from, I'm sorry, Commissioner Proctor, you were there, I'm sorry.
If you'll afford me just a couple seconds here.
Sorry, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm, I'm, I am brokenhearted at the prospect of Ms. Brenda Williams not serving our community, and she's so graciously in her style, low-key. She walks out retiring from the Tallahassee Housing Authority, both swinging and banging, and not nary a word as she mentioned about the late Bradford Road development there. Ms. Williams, just to flush out your resume and body of work, the tractors are there, dirt is being hauled around. Could you please inform the community what Tallahassee Housing Authority is doing on Lake Bradford Road?
Yes, the Housing Authority partnered with Elmington Capital to build 158 affordable housing units on the corner of Kissimmee and Lake Bradford Road. The units will consist of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. The, the project is currently under construction, and we anticipate that the project will be completed and available for occupancy in the fall of 2026.
Wow. That part, Commissioners, was not even put on the table, work that's occurring as she's walking out of the door. Her footprints will long be noted and cherished here in our community. I never thought that Brenda Williams was going to achieve the work that she's done because her demeanor and low-key is just so not going to make it with the city commission and the county commission of Leon. This is a rambunctious group, and you're always just low-key with everybody. And you have demonstrated with 448 new units of affordable housing, your, your, your walk exceeds your talk, and for the dollars that we have put in as a commission to back your work, your vision, the return is multiple times exponentially greater than what we would have achieved in any other approach. So thank you, Brenda. Columbia Gardens is a testament to you. They ought to rename it Brenda Williams Gardens with 197 people to be relocated over in Springfield. That is amazing. Now, on page 30, this was a great report. I only got up to page 47 going real fast, but there's so much more beautiful. But to give this community, Mr. Chairman, just the context of an area where she's working, the, using your data analysis, the Springfield median household income is $27,722. That's in the 32304 Florida's poorest zip code. The median household income for Tallahassee is $59,757, more than double the median income in Springfield. And in Florida, in the state of Florida, $72,200. She's working in an area where the numbers are just, says it shouldn't work. The housing value in Springfield is 116K. In Tallahassee, the average house is 230K, and in Florida, 373K. And I think that when you look at these numbers in housing and affordability, how do you flip that? I can tell you, Brenda, if you all get 197 people to come back to brand-new housing stock in a neighborhood where people, median income is $27,000, and you're going to place 197 people, that is a ridiculous, awesome feat. And it's been in the context of these areas inside of District One that your work, your transformation is so well noted. Because when you look at Dr. Henry Lewis, Commissioner Lewis, when you look at, this is our first District One Commissioner, Commissioner Henry Lewis, and when you look at, he grew up in Barn Elementary, and when you look at what we have been working to transform, to build up, to lift up over time, we've not had a sister soldier this bad, ever. And Brenda, I love you from the bottom of my heart, and I don't know what Nick going to put on that proclamation, but just know that me, too, I'm, I'm riding it out with it. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much, Ms. Brenda Williams, and for the angel she's been that God has brought to this community, as you, sir, prolifically, Brenda, we thank you.
And if I could just recognize one of our commissioners that's here today, Dr. Henry Lewis, if you could stand and we recognize.
Commissioner O'Keefe, Ms. Williams.
No, she, you don't have to stay up there.
He gonna say nice things about you.
Fantastic work.
Fantastic work. And y'all couldn't see Brenda Williams' face that whole time. Part of why I think she gets so much done is she had this face up there like, can y'all please stop talking about how good I am and let me get back to work? So just thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could we please take their picture? I didn't see no photo.
Yeah, y'all need a photo.
I need to show up on this photo with this group of fantasy. All this work has been done inside of District One. Michigan Van over on Lake Bradford Road, I know you're gonna try to take a little credit, but that's District One, buddy, that's District One.
Don't take any credit, Commissioner Van.
Dr. Lewis.
Commissioner.
As long as you can see my face.
Commissioner Lewis requested that we Photoshop his old Commissioner photo in there.
Thank you all. Next up, we've got a presentation from Tom Napier about Honor Flight Tallahassee. Tom, are you here?
I'm right here.
There you are. There you are. Always a pleasure to see you, Tom.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, and Vincent, and Kestney, not to see you, too. It brings me great pleasure to come before you today, present Honor Flight's presentation to what the Leon County Government has done for Honor Flight. We have proposed 11 flights over the period of years. We started in 2012, and we completed our last 11th trip. And next week, not next month, but April 26th, we're gonna go in another one. So we're gonna go on another flight, and we hope one of you, two or three, comes with us. But anyway, my purpose here today is our board directors appreciates me coming and making the presentation. Matt Kemp's our chairman. He's retired from EMS, and he asked me from Long Island someplace, he's on the ocean someplace. He said, Tom, make a presentation to the county for me. So he's retired, justified. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to present to you Honor Flight's presentation for our, what we do for Honor Flight Tallahassee.
Very good, very good.
All right, Commissioners, I want to thank those Commissioners, Mr. Vice Chairman, for Grady County. I would take a picture with y'all, but y'all so tall and whatnot to, I look short standing by you. All right, guys, be safe. They make you look real short, you know.
Thank you all. I appreciate it very much. We're gonna have the October 18th, we're gonna have an Honor Flight Car Show out at DeMousse Lodge Car Show. And then on December the 6th, on Saturday, we have the Honor Flight reunion of all veterans and guardians for dinner. And all those who went on us all these years, we'd be presented with Honor Flight Dinner for all. And this is what we're gonna do. We keep on going, and we're gonna keep on going again. Thank you all for your presentation, and thank you for your support.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, this is a good segue for me. And I just want to say, you know how much we appreciate Honor Flight and Matt Kemp and EMS and their role, and Tom, your support over the years. It's one of the proudest things that I get to experience with Leon County Government. And so just want to thank you so much for all you do for our veterans. It really is awesome. Thank you so much for being here. Yes, sir. All right. So I have the honor of presenting the awards for the 2025 Leon County Neighborhood Recognition Program. This is such an important program. And for 44 consecutive years, Leon County, in partnership with the Council of Neighborhood Associations, has celebrated our community's outstanding neighborhood places and people, making our entire county a great place to live, work, and play. So before I announce this year's winners, I'd like to invite Chris, oh, Christine's not gonna make it today, but we do want to send our prayers out to her and hope she recovers quickly. I would like to invite Leroy Peck from Kona to the podium for a few remarks. And as they make their way up, I would like to ask our award winners to join us at the podium. So I think all of our award winners can just kind of come on up here and stand around me and.
Thank you, Leroy.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. It is a pleasure to stand before you. And I want to take a moment, really, just to thank you all for your commitment to public service in a time when it's not easy to be a public servant. And so thank you for your continued work for the public good. As Commissioners in Florida's capital county, vibrant, organized, engaged neighborhoods are the lifeblood of our community. And today, Kona congratulates the winners. And we really do appreciate the county in continuing this awards recognition program, highlighting the best and brightest in our neighborhoods, and showcasing best practices for other neighborhoods. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Leroy. All right. So we appreciate you guys' leadership and Kona's commitment to our great community and this important partnership. And now, for the moment we've all been waiting for, let's recognize our 2025 County Award winners. After the announcements, I'll ask one representative from each neighborhood, as well as the Neighbor of the Year to speak. And we will take one big group photo at the end of the presentation, if that's cool with everybody. All right, Small Neighborhood of the Year. This year's Small Neighborhood fostered a connected community through thoughtful initiatives such as introducing electronic newsletters and real time alerts, hosting family movie and pizza nights, and organizing neighborhood beautification workdays. They also prioritize safety and sustainability by joining the Neighborhood Crime Watch Program and completing a two-year tree project to protect the health of their green spaces. I am proud to present this award to the Avondale Neighborhood Association. Let's give them a hand. Okay. Oh, earring, yep, yep. Okay. Are we gonna do one at a time, or Avondale, okay, okay, okay. Okay, now we're gonna do Large Neighborhood of the Year. This year's Large Neighborhood of the Year is recognized for its leadership and community excellence through strategic planning. Major environmental and recreational initiatives were achieved, such as the restoration of their community lake, transforming Shamrock South Park into an inclusive ADA accessible space, and developing a new dog park. They also expanded their digital communication to improve engagement and accessibility, and established new annual events, including an Easter egg hunt and Fall Festival. This year's Large Neighborhood of the Year award goes to my neighborhood, Kalaran Homes Association. Let's give them a big round of applause. All right, Unincorporated Neighborhood of the Year. Our Unincorporated Neighborhood of the Year added a new lending library and strengthened its digital communications. They practiced everyday sustainability, composting, planting natives, recycling, and using less paper. They bring neighbors together with men's gatherings, ladies' game nights, and holiday celebrations. Please join me in congratulating the High Grove Homeowners Association, our Unincorporated Neighborhood of the Year. And lastly, before we hear from our honorees, let's recognize our Neighbor of the Year. Congratulations to Daniel Tommy Smith of the Villas Neighborhood, our Neighbor of the Year. In this close knit neighborhood, Tommy is a trusted and valuable resource for neighbors who need a hand with household tasks, whether repairing gates, filling bird feeders, or performing other chores. Tommy's dedication to service has always allowed many neighbors to enjoy their homes with dignity and peace of mind. Tommy has even built multiple little free libraries across the neighborhood, complete with books for all ages, and food donation slots. Tommy has not only enhanced the lives of his neighbors, but also strengthened the fabric of his neighborhood. Let's give Tommy a hand. He is our Neighbor of the Year. All right. So let's hear from each of our neighborhoods real quick. Is there a representative from Avondale? Come on right up, come right on up.
Hi, my name is Olivia Jordan, and I'm president of the HOA at Avondale. And I always just want to thank you for this award. We're very pleased and honored. We have worked very hard over the past years. So on behalf of our board and all our 185 neighbors, we thank you so much.
Hello. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Caleb Martinez. I'm here representing Kalaran Estates with the Kalaran Homes Association neighborhood as the community association manager. Wanted to thank you all for recognizing us today with this wonderful achievement. We hope to take all of the great work that we were able to do last year with, in part with our directors and all of our members, and be able to continue that on into 2025 and here into the future. Thank you all.
My name is Tim Burns. I'm the president of the High Grove Homeowners Association. On behalf of our 400 residents, I'd like to extend to each of you, thank you for selecting us for the 2005 Unincorporated Neighborhood of the Year. High Grove has 134 homes. It's on 175 rolling acres in District Four with our Commissioner Brian Welsh. We are, if you don't know, we're kind of sandwiched in between Lake Hall and McClay Gardens. It's very pleasing neighborhood. And we'll also thank you for validating that it's a special place to us. We're grateful, we're grateful to everybody, and we will make sure we display our sign as the entrance to High Grove for everyone to see. Thank you.
I'm not surprised that Tommy asked me to speak on his behalf because he's that kind of gentleman. He's quiet, but he is one of the, how do you put it, best neighbors that a neighborhood could ask for. He is strong and quiet and gentle and kind, everything from if we need instructions on anything, that's Tommy. And we appreciate you, Mr. Smith, more than you know, more than you know. So on his behalf, thank you, and thank you.
All right, we're gonna get a picture. We're gonna go up there. All right, if you guys want to just gather around in front of the dais there. All right. Thank you all so much. We are super proud of our great neighborhoods here in Leon County. That is for sure. Hey, Ken, virtual. All right, Commissioners. Mr. Administrator, do we have any citizens to be heard on non-agended items?
We do, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, thank you. Our first speaker, Harry Brown.
Mr. Brown, if you could step to the podium, please. Please provide your name and address for the record. Mr. Brown. Oh, there we go. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Good evening.
Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
I'm Harry Brown. Live at 5431 Crump Road, Tallahassee 32309. I discovered a little problem.
Matt, can you adjust that microphone?
You're living in the rural area. Living in the rural area with our wells. And I've been living at my address for 44 years. And last month was the first time I had this kind of stuff on my filter, trash like this. And as I was getting out of my vehicle this afternoon, out behind the Capitol here, our paper sold off of it. But I do have a picture on my phone. If the photographer would like to have that picture shown, she could really later on show it to you all to see what some of us are experiencing. Now, I talked to many people out in the neighborhood who say they don't have filters. So if you have a filter and you collecting such as that on it, something's going wrong that nobody's protecting the water system like they should. And as I came in here this afternoon, I got a pic, a notice from the City of Tallahassee stating that in my neighborhood, there's no city water in that area. Some people are saying that the city water come as far as Centerville Road and Brashville Road. I don't know that, but I'm sure when I talk to this person here, they'll tell me that later. But I hate to think of something like that coming in on somebody's well. You just don't know what's in the debris when it gets to your well, and what may be coming off that debris after it gets to your well and maybe getting in your drinking water inside your house. So I think where we start with with something like this is the well driller, that maybe they're not keeping the holes covered as they continue digging your well. But what I'm asking you all, if you can give us some help with this situation, I would certainly appreciate it. Okay? I'm wondering, I'm just wondering how many of us here live out in the rural area and don't have filters? Can I see the hands? So everybody have filters? That's good. That means you're not living out in the rural area. But if you're living in the rural area, there are many people who don't have filters. And even if you have filters, this filter is a real rusty red when it comes out of your well. So if you can give us some help in that area, I would certainly appreciate it. And I'm sorry that I have to be the one bringing this kind of information. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
And I must say, though, I have a picture of the filter.
Matt, could you work with Mr. Brown and grab that?
It's plastic.
Right behind you there. He can help you with that and get any information you want to get to us. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next speaker.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, next speaker, John Gibby.
Mr. Gibby, name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. I'm John Gibby, 4887 Young Road. What item number is this we're speaking on, please?
This is non-agended items.
Yeah, it's since it's on consent as well. Sorry about that, Mr. Gibby. Yeah, item 14.
Maintenance contract?
Yes.
I'm hurrying. Sorry. Item number 14. This is a contract for maintenance for the county. I appreciate you all letting me have the opportunity to speak. It's a pleasure to visit the government and discuss things. I just had a curious question. The intersection at Gum Road and Capital Circle, which is included in this contract, over the years, it appears that they do, the city does a fabulous job of where they do work. It just appears that they're not going and doing the full intersection at Gum Road. And it just would be extra helpful if we make it in the record that extra attention will need to be done taking care of that. Thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Gibby?
On that, I know.
Were you asking a question?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker, also, Mr. Gibby, on item number 19.
Your backup, Mr. Gibby.
Item number 19 is also the interlocal agreement on landscaping on areas of Capital Circle Southwest and Southeast. Your previous comments may have covered that as well.
Are we on?
You're on number 19.
Are we gonna do 20?
We're on number 19. Number 20 is next. You also have a card in on that.
Excuse me, John Gibby, 4887 Gum Road.
Go ahead.
Start over?
Yeah, you go ahead. Talk about whatever you want, Mr. Gibby.
Well, we'll stick with item 9.
Okay.
Uh, this. Uh, this is, um, the 19. Well, one of them is the agreement with DOT. The other one's agreement with the city. And, um, part of the contract with the city, um, is to do some other Thomasville Road and some other things. And I just wanted to make sure that, um, we stay focused on at least the part around the garbage transfer station because we already have enough problems, and since we have the funding, I just, again, want to make sure that the record, um, shows that we're working on it. Uh, the Public Works Director has been incredibly helpful. Maggie, uh, the Sustainability Director, has been very cooperative. Um, I'm not complaining, I'm not here complaining, I'm just making sure the record has at least my two cents because you're gonna collect it. Yes. Thank you.
All right, perfect. Thank you, Mr. Gibby. I think you're on the next one, too.
Uh, next item, uh, John Gibby, item number 20. That is the, um, status report on efforts to address poverty and inequities in 32304.
Now, um, please bear with me, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the gizmo's not working, but I have copies, I think. Uh, who, who can I give them to?
Probably give those to Mr. Ken right here. There you go. Yeah, I think we're working. We may not need the handouts.
Okay, so, we're talking about a very, oh, sorry. Um, my name's John Gibby, 4887 Gum Road. Uh, we're on item...
20.
20, discussing poverty and zip codes. The, um, I live, I don't want to say unfortunately, I'm a proud owner of across the street from Gum Road, and I don't know if you all recall the sting road from the, uh, the garbage transfer station, how, how difficult it was to try to get something as simple as a tire washer. However, I looked at a very curious, um, excuse me. Did you, uh, did, do you all have it?
Yes, sir, we've got it.
Okay. So, it was, I, I started to try to plot, uh, some faces with the poverty. And when you look at it, it's very, at least clear to me that I can tell who really is standing up for us. Not to say that you all aren't, but it, it's clear that you can tell who's really, really trying to help us. And so, uh, this particular picture here was not so much for the public as, as it is for you all to see that the poor neighborhoods, and this is according to your data, really do get the bad stuff. And after I did that plot, I realize now why I got a garbage transfer station across the street from my house. Why is that? Because I'm in the poorest zip code. And what unfortunately happens with people that don't have the resources because they're poor, they typically can't vote. And that's typically why governments, I'm not saying that pointing the finger at you all, because this is what, this is how our society has treated people. And so, your, your agenda item has all these wonderful things that you've done for the community, which is great, but the reality is, things like the garbage transfer station get stuck in these neighborhoods, and then, when you guys put it in our neighborhood, you promised us sidewalks, waiving fees, and I had to come back and beg you guys to do those things. And so, it's just, we should think about how we do stuff. And, and again, I really appreciate you all letting me talk to you all. I'm a proud citizen of this community. I love talking to you all. Everybody I talk to is helpful, and I, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibby. Next speaker.
That concludes our speakers on this portion of the agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Administrator. Commissioners, we're on consent. I believe we have four items pulled. Can we get a motion for the non-pulled items?
So, Mr. Chair.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Caban and a second from Commissioner Minor on consent, the consent agenda minus the four items that have been pulled. All those in favor, signal, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner O'Keefe?
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Um, I would just like to recognize Melanie Andrade-Williams, who we're appointing to the Council on the Status of Women and Girls, uh, proudly as a representative of mine from District Five. She is one of the co-founding members of Dream Defenders. She's the Policy Director at the Florida Health Justice Project and is a prolific political and community organizer who is already jumping on the Political Equity Committee for Women and Girls in our community. So, I wanted to make sure that we gave her her flowers for jumping on that committee.
All right, thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Thank you for your service. Um, all right, Commissioners, we're back on this consent agenda. Um, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, show it passes unanimously. We are on pulled items, first pulled item, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 13 is a one-year extension, an amendment, uh, on the council, uh, for the Council of Culture and Arts Funding Agreement, uh, through fiscal year 2026. Uh, we are recommending, uh, option one to extend, uh, for the one-year term, uh, and as I mentioned, uh, Commissioners, in the item, that this will put us in a position, uh, during your upcoming, uh, budget workshops, to have a more comprehensive, uh, uh, presentation and, and policy discussion among the board, uh, on, uh, COCA in general. Uh, but with that, we're recommending option one. We're happy to answer any questions you might have.
Um, who pulled the item?
Commissioner Caban.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, for discussion purposes, I'd like to move option one.
All right.
Staff recommendation, optional.
We've got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion, a second. Go ahead, Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, I pulled, I pulled all four of these items, and I'll, I'll be very brief, um, as, as I run through them. First of all, I would like to just give a, um, a warm thank you to all the work that, that COCA does for our community. Uh, I know that arts and culture are fundamental as you, um, lay a landscape out for our community, and I know that this is something that, um, our neighbors and residents in Leon County truly do treasure. However, I do want to point out a few things. One, this, Mr. County Administrator, that, um, COCA receives 20% of our tourist development tax dollars, like just flat rate, 20%. Is that accurate?
One cent, which represents 20%. Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Um, I think that this is something that, as we come back in our budget workshop in the spring, that I, I would like to see staff bring to us in the future with some options to discuss. You know, we don't, in our budget, we don't pretty much have anything that's just a flat rate percent that every year, as our tax dollars grow, the, the amount grows with it. When you look at what the, what the sheriff does, the sheriff comes to us every year with this proposed budget and makes a, a case as to why he needs his budget increase. And this amount, uh, through which our tourist development dollars has grown, Mr. County Administrator, from basically $1 million to, you know, roughly $2 million over the span of the contract. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
And with that, you know, COCA is sitting on $2 million in cash. That is a lot of money. And so, you know, as, as our, as a board, one thing I think that we really need to start digesting is, we should be supplementing funding to nonprofits that I believe need the money. And sitting on $2 million in cash and then coming up in then one fiscal year, awarding them another $1.8 million, it's something worth us having a conversation in the future because they're supposed to be using that dollars to drive tourism in Leon County. You know, the, the, the purpose of tourism dollars is to put heads in beds, and if they're not awarding, if they're not awarding those contracts out and they're just kind of stockpiling it and sitting on it, you know, there's an opportunity cost for that money, for that money that we could give to other organizations to help drive tourism in our community. Additionally, prior to having this agenda come out, um, and I want to be careful how I say this, but has been brought to my attention that one of the recipients, and I want to say this is all allegedly, because I don't have concrete proof of this, but this is something that was brought to our office, and so I do want to just acknowledge this publicly, that, um, the Tallahassee Museum, who is a receiver of the COCA funding from the tourist, from our board, the tourist development, we fund COCA, then COCA funds the Tallahassee Museum. It has been, um, brought to my attention that allegedly, the, the Tallahassee Museum has been granting, um, for five years, in, in excess of $1.2 million to one of their board members without going through a proper RFP process. And so, I say that allegedly because I, I don't have proof, but someone approached us and told us, hey, this is going on. And so, I, I think it's important, as we, I assume we'll talk about the, the gift that was, you know, given to, to a fair, a North Florida Fair Association employee, I assume we'll talk about that later in this meeting. But I think it's important, as we talk about the distribution of taxpayer dollars and how it's being used as we award some of these nonprofits, once we give that money to a different organization, we have far less oversight and control of that money. And so, I think it's important, as we are distributing taxpayer dollars to entities, period, that we maintain some trust in the public of how it's being used in the future. And so, um, I, I did just want to bring that to the board's attention because I think it's important, and I did speak to the county administrator, and he said this is something that we'll bring back, right? In our, in our spring, uh, budget workshop is to relook at this, but, um, I do believe it's worth noting, we are awarding, um, nonprofit $1.8 million while they're currently sitting on $2 million in cash equivalent assets. And so, um, Mr. Chair, um, I just wanted to bring that to the board's and public's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner O'Keefe?
I want to ask the, uh, either or both, uh, our county administrator or our county attorney, uh, relative to the facts and allegations made by Commissioner Caban, which are ma- major, potentially. Uh, should our board be alarmed? Uh, is there something that our board needs to pursue? Uh, what of these facts warrant, uh, further, uh, review by you?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, this is the first that this allegation has been made public. Um, we would, to know whether there's anything actionable that the board could even do, we would have to review the COCA, the agreement we have with COCA, to see what, um, and the conditions and the terms of any, uh, monies that they receive that are granted to them to determine whether anything is actionable. If that's something that the board will like us to follow up on, then that's certainly something that, uh, we could do.
If, if there, and I, I serve on TDC, and I feel ashamed that I, I have no response, uh, rebuttal to refute comments made by Commissioner Caban, and I'm sitting there. Um, but tonight, um, those matters are very important, and comments that I was going to make, um, were based upon, uh, my perception that things were going along. But at this point, we, we probably, Commissioners, should, um, table, um, um, an acceptance of this, uh, report. And if we receive it, I think we all have recommendations to, um, to rebut the report or either to make recommendations, because when you get down to Exhibit A of, uh, recommendations, objectives, and strategies, and specifically on page 45, as you were, were speaking, uh, Commissioner Caban and I, I remember glossing over something, and, um, it says something like, "COCA provides an annual report to Commissioners of City of Tallahassee, Leon County, reporting back the progress of their previous year's contract," which I think serves as a justifier for the next year's contract. And there's language, uh, presented to us, but how it's, um, actionalized, um, I don't know, or how it is actualized and actionized, uh, I'm not sure. But I, I would feel that on something that you've said, as significant as you've said, uh, and I trust your integrity, uh, I would like to suggest that we, um, table this matter till we get a clear report, uh, that things are tight and right, clean and green.
I think the Administrator can jump in on that. Commissioner Proctor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Commissioners, just in terms of the, um, the action before you tonight, uh, again, as, as Commissioner, uh, Caban outlined, uh, none of the issues, uh, or, or, I don't, I don't believe that your action tonight would prevent us from continuing to look into just to some of those issues. I did want to just bring to your attention that the existing contract expires on September 30th, um, which would call into question some of the sub-granting that, that occurs under this grant. Um, and again, uh, the, the existing one-year extension was put in place, uh, for us to have the opportunity to take a comprehensive look at, uh, at COCA and how we structure our current relationship. And again, we'd be prepared to do that for you in the upcoming, uh, budget workshops. But should the board, uh, decide to, to not table and to extend the, the one-year extension, we would, uh, look into the issues, uh, that were brought up here tonight, if that's something that the board directs us to do. Just food for thought.
Let me ask this question, because I heard the shadow of, uh, Commissioner Caban's, uh, comments saying something like, "Are we compelled to give $1 million to COCA?" And they're sitting on $2 million. They're supposed to be a nonprofit, or do we look at how much money they are sitting on to tell us, uh, how, and how much we should fund them? So, if they're sitting on $2 million, now imagine some of that's our money, too. Ain't use that money. Why, then, are we giving them new money when they've got old money they ain't spent? That's what I heard him ask.
Go ahead, Mr. Administrator.
Legitimate question, questions that, that we've raised and we've been working with COCA on to, to, to address of yours. I'll ask Matt to come on up. He's someone who's been working on this. I think we've got, uh, Kerry, uh, available to answer, uh, questions as well. But essentially, Commissioners, there is some, uh, reserve accumulation from year to year based on, um, how much, uh, the, the penny generates. And again, so, uh, you could have a grant process where you anticipate to receive $1 million in, in, in revenue, but you may receive, uh, 1.5 million in revenue. That therefore, 5 million would carry over. So, there's some balancing. However, your concerns are, 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 uh, valid in that you'll, you see reflected in this one-year extension that we've put some additional caps on their, on their, uh, on their expenditures. Uh, and that, those caps are intended to help guide them to spend, uh, the money for re-granting, uh, that we award them each year. But with that, let me ask Matt to just elaborate a little more on that.
Yeah, exactly. So, in the agreement, Commissioners, Chairman, um, in the agreement, in it, as it exists currently under the funding agreement, and if extended, there are provisions in there to also engage with COCA to understand the application of those dollars and to, um, to continue to work with them on the use of that 20%, um, that single penny that would be applied. So, we definitely can continue to, under an extended agreement, have the conversations about dispensing reserves and then, um, further TDD collection into the next year, especially as we contemplate the budget discussion item that was articulated in the item to come to before the board next year in the budget discussion process. So, there are measures to continue to engage in that conversation with them throughout the year, even if extended, um, under this current amended agreement.
Okay. That right there is, uh, thinking, man. That's awesome, but it still does not answer the question. Um, Commissioner Maddox, do we re-up? Do we re-up on a group that ain't need no re-upping? And I'm not sure of a, a long-term policy that we've had over the years that has suppressed us, but maybe we've gotten to a year, as, 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 uh, Mr. Long has described, this has just been a fruitful, bountiful year, and their monies have come in a certain way. But I believe that, um, most of these folk that we fund, they come in here with both hands out, out of need. And, uh, I'm not saying that this looks like the request was out of greed, but I think there ought to be clarity... ought to be clarity when we know their coffers, bank accounts are running full. Can we hit the brakes, hold that money, put it someplace else? Does this penny, when generated, we're duty bound by law to give them this money?
Mr. Caban's going to comment on point, Mr. Proctor.
Mr. County Administrator, C O K A essentially is a pass-through agency, right? So we award them the funding, and then their sole job is to disperse it to, I guess, sub-organizations, right?
Yes. In addition to what they do in the community and carrying out the cultural plan and that sort of thing, the major function that we have with them is, is a re-granting process.
Is that something where we could look at? I think it's important, you know, the work that C O K A does, I believe is important as far as, you know, increasing art and culture across our community. However, when it comes to the sub-grant process, is that not something where we could do in-house, right? Where, I mean, if we're having organizations come to us, I think it allows us to have more oversight as far as how we're distributing those funds. Is that something that we could do?
It's certainly something that we've explored in the past, and we've actually brought recommendations to that effect to the board in the past. Again, I think during your budget discussion workshops upcoming, it would give the board the opportunity to comprehensively review all of, all of that, with all the information that you could make decisions based on that. But yes, that could be a part of it.
So, yeah. I do want to also point out, and, you know, the, it was brought to my attention about the issue of the Tallahassee Museum wasn't alleged. I don't want to come out and say that's happened. We have not been able to validate that. So I would like staff to take some look, take a look into that. The biggest heartache I have currently with this is that this agenda item says to award 1.8 million dollars to a nonprofit organization that's currently sitting on 2 million dollars in cash. So that's my biggest heartache, you know, and, you know, I'll, you know, I made a motion to accept the item on staff recommendation, if that's where the board wants to go, I'm happy to do it. But it's just, you know, I think there's an opportunity cost there, clearly that we've been distributing funds to them over the last five years, because this, this penny for, through the T D T has grown, because tourism has grown. But I also think that they have a duty to use the funding to drive more tourism, and it just doesn't sit right that we're supplementing additional funding if they haven't used funding from previous years. So, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Minister, I got four people in the queue. Sounds like it could be pretty well handled in a budget discussion item, so, but I've got Commissioner O'Keefe, Commissioner Cummings, Commissioner Maddox, and Commissioner Minor all in the queue. So Commissioner O'Keefe, go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If we do not approve extending a contract ending, and the term ends as September 30th this year, does that mean that none of the T D T, the new T D T money gets out to local programs and events over the next year?
Mr. Chairman, yeah. Commissioners, that was the intent behind Option One, was to allow the, the current programming and granting to continue while we address some of the issues we're talking about. And again, we put additional guardrails on this year as well, in the interest of getting the, the money spent and that sort of thing. So, so yes.
And if it's easily available, do you know how much the last award to the Tallahassee Museum was?
I wouldn't have that. Well, it looks like Matt has it.
In fiscal year '25, this current fiscal year, the award was 402,000 dollars in total. If I did some math, about 110,000 of that is the legacy grant process, and the remainder is the C O K A sub-grant.
Okay. So, so my thoughts on this are that, just like when a change, what would be a significant program change to C H S P process almost two years ago came up, for that year, when we were doing that year, it was, I think, too big of a change to do at the last minute. And that's what I think about this here. And I think that's why we've extended it a year, so we can spend a year having a full, in-depth discussion about how, what is about 2 million dollars a year of money that we want to get to keep heads in beds. And I waited this whole time trying to think of a better or different metaphor, but there just isn't one that's appropriate. I don't think we should pause or not extend or change at this moment. But, so what I would like, and I am a big fan of due process, and I don't want to hold up all of the money, passing the deadline, and perhaps having where, not only, if the worry now is that there's T D T money sitting in the bank at C O K A unused, if we pause to investigate an alleged incident and freeze the entire contract right now, extending, then none of the new T D T money goes out this year, and it just is in our bank account. So I'm gonna, but that needs to be investigated, and if staff needs our direction to look into the facts of that alleged incident, what I would like to do then is offer a friendly amendment for staff recommendation, plus directing staff to look into the possible incident you've mentioned.
All right, we've got an amendment. Who's the seconder? Commissioner Maddox, you cool with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So we've got the staff recommendation plus the amendment to look into, investigate a little bit. All right, Commissioner Cummings, then Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is interesting conversation and revelations as well. I think, well, to me, and I think to most of us, art is very important in our community. C O K A has been a vital entity in that process, and I, you know, we understand that they're the entity, the pass-through entity, so to speak. And of course, we have the oversight. But, but let me ask Mr. County Administrator, Carrie Post pretty much works with them. Is she pretty much the county administrator that works?
She is.
Okay, she is. She is. Okay. And I think most of us receive communication from the executive director as well, within the last couple of days, in reference to the administrative cap in the marketing area. And what she requested is that the language in the consent agenda be amended to just give them, to say something to the effect that staff will work with C O K A in addressing that marketing cap that's in, that's in the contract as well. And Mr. County Administrator, I think you, you addressed that in, in the memo that you sent to all of us. But I think recognizing that Carrie Post, and of course you as the county administrator, are involved with C O K A, I agree with Commissioner O'Keefe, that since this is an extension, a one-year extension, that we continue that, the contract. If there are some concerns as raised by Commissioner Caban, we can flush those out, we can, we can look into it. But I would also, as part of that, his friendly amendment, if we can also just add the language saying that staff will work, will work with C O K A to address that, that cap as it relates to the marketing line item cap. And I say work with them, I'm not saying raise it, but to work with them or to address it. And I don't think it would necessarily have to come back to this board, but I think it would certainly be within the authority of the county administrator to address it, and the rationale that's provided from the county administrator, from Carrie, Carrie Post, it could be modified, or it might not be modified, but I think giving the flexibility to staff to look at it. So I would like to, to see, I think it was your motion, Commissioner.
Mr. Chair.
Caban.
Sure. Yeah, I'm going to accept the friendly amendment, just giving them discretion to work with them, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Maddox, you okay with that?
Yes, but I got a whole bunch of questions.
Okay. Mr. Maddox, Commissioner Cummings, are you good?
Yes, he accepted the friend amendment to give them discretion to. Thank you.
Commissioner Maddox, you're up.
Thank you. First, who's the board appointee to C O K A?
Me.
You. You want to, you want to go? As I, I read the email, it said that, that C O K A has a budgeting deficit. That's, it said, the email, I'm looking at the email that was sent, and the last, it says, "The lack of flexibility in marketing caps is limiting spending types in these line items and causing a budget deficit to occur." Now, they got 2 million dollars in reserves?
In equivalents, we'd have to give you the exact number, but yes, they do not have a budget deficit. I can address that.
And as, as, if I'm reading this, what I'm reading is that because the marketing caps is creating a problem with them spending the money.
No, no, we're, we're putting the market cap, we're putting the caps in place so that they do, they are forced to get the re-granting dollars on the street. Or again, provide additional guardrails to ensure that they get the, the more, the, the C O K A dollars on the street.
I think it's, it's, I, I believe that staff, that the C O K A staff probably expected this to pass without much conversation. It was on consent. And now we're having a deep conversation, and there's some, there are some, some things to think about when you got 2 million dollars in reserves, and a lot of questions to be answered. And I don't, I don't believe there's a representative from C O K A here today to answer those questions. In effect, it kind of makes it a little unfair for us to be at this point, but I understand Commissioner Caban's thoughts and where, where he's going with this. I could either ask the chair, the chair who's our appointee, or I could ask the county administrator, but how do you get to, I, I heard what you said earlier about the increases and all that kind of stuff, but how do you get to 2 million dollars around about that you have in reserves? Because those dollars could be going out to organizations that, that need them. So how, how do we get to that point again?
Yes. Well, a, a little bit of it occurs naturally, just given the nature of the fund and the program. Again, you estimate the amount of revenue that you anticipate to receive, you grant an amount of that, and you, you may actually collect more than that. So those dollars would carry forward. That's not to say that, that that amount is justified. Again, the additional guardrails that we've put in place are intended to help make sure that those re-grantings occur, and that those dollars aren't utilized in, in, in large amounts elsewhere. And, and again, it goes to the one-year nature of the extension, allowing us the time to address all these issues and bring them back to the board in a deliberate, comprehensive way for you to consider all these issues.
So, in my own words, just to make sure I understand what you're saying, to me, it could be a budget, a issue where they under-budgeted, and more revenues came in that were budgeted, and that's kind of a, that could be some of the issue. So if, if you said, you said, if we don't agree, if we don't pass this today, they could not go into those reserves and use those dollars to, to, to perform the grant process this year?
Really couldn't speak on that in its entirety. Again, the, the purpose that the, the reason that the option is, is constructed the way it is, is to ensure that there's no interruption of their, of their function, of their grant process and that sort of thing. And at the same time, us ensuring that we're pulling all of those reserves into the re-granting process to be utilized.
Have we ever, have we ever, have we ever seen this amount of, of a reserve at C O K A?
I think this is the high watermark.
What's the average, if you know the average? If there is one.
I wouldn't know the average yet, but I'd have to ask Matt.
Generally speaking, they end a fiscal year at approximately 800 to 900,000 in reserve, and I can speak only very widely to what Kathleen has shared in previous meetings. So again, please, she would be the best representative to talk to the budget. But generally speaking, they budget in what they have in reserve. They then use what is reserved to budget for what's in the upcoming year. So then therefore, having some amount of money to budget for the upcoming grant process in their reserves is, is how they do that process. That being said, though, as the administrator has, has outlined, the amendments in the proposed extended agreement ensure that as many of those dollars that they would receive go to re-granting as possible.
So I, and the board is made up of art organizations, arts and organizations in town, right? Art performance?
That's correct, generally speaking.
Right. For those who are, who are new, who, you know, have been here a while, and, and C O K A has done great work in our community when it came to the arts, and granting, and putting this in the right posture when it comes to arts. And so it's been a very valuable asset to our community. I'm disappointed to sit here today to see 2 million dollars in reserves that have not been spent. But, but I cannot say that C O K A has not been valuable to the community in a way that we should consider moving in, in another direction. What I would like to see, what I would like to, would like to understand more, as I am a former member of the C O K A board, is what is, how does their budgeting and their spending work? I don't, I don't understand. It's not making sense to me why at the end of the year, you got 900,000, even if, even if you under-budgeted, I mean, did you really under-budget that much? I just, I would like to understand how that part of it works. And maybe that comes back in the agenda item, that, that Commissioner.
Did you ask for the agenda item? I think, I think some information.
It's coming for you as a budget discussion. It'll include all that.
Yeah, yeah, right. If you can, if you can include that as well. Today, I am, I am able to support moving for, moving forward, so as not to interrupt the process of what C O K A does, because I don't have enough information to make a decision to do that today. But I, I move forward very cautiously, because I just don't understand how you get to that much money in reserves when you're, I mean, it's about a million dollars over where they usually are. And so I, I look forward to that budget discussion item, and I, and I thank staff for whatever changes they're making and working with them to try to, try to really get that money spent down, because I'm surprised we don't have 20 organizations here complaining about not being granted money, or, or the money being bottlenecked in the C O K A process. So I'll support the motion on the floor, but I, I got a lot of questions, and I look forward to that budget discussion item. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate it. Good discussion on this. You know, I, the, the fact that we've had an increase in, in T D T funds coming in is a testament to Carrie Post and our Visit Tallahassee team. They've done a terrific job. I think for the last several years, we've had more than 1 billion dollars in tourism revenue coming into Leon County because of Carrie Post and her team. So kudos to that. Now, regarding the use of T D T, and I know this because 10 years ago, I was working in a group that was, that was considering applying for T D T funds. I suspect one reason why you have a balance like this is because we've had an influx of, of new revenue coming in through tourism, more heads in beds. But also, it's, it's actually, it's difficult to grant those funds to eligible applicants, because an applicant has to demonstrate conclusively, well, with, with pretty convincing proof, that the event that they're going to host, or the effort they're going to have for the arts, is going to lead to X number of people in hotels. And that can be hard to do. So I suspect that's one reason why there might be a large balance in the account. All that being said, there's a large balance in the account. And so I think the motion that's on the floor right now is the right one. Option One, as amended twice with friendly amendments, is, is to move forward with the one-year extension, but direct staff to take, to work with C O K A to understand the, the more, more details of what the budget has. I spoke with the executive director twice about her request on the percentage increases, but we did not get a chance to talk about the outstanding, the balance, the 2 million in cash and cash equivalent assets. That discussion needs to take place. And I think the motion on the floor will give our staff the ability to, to work with C O K A on that. And should there be anything that staff might recommend to us to reconsider, I'm sure that staff will do that. So I'm, I, I support the motion on the floor, and I look forward to hearing from our county staff on, on more of the budget workings within C O K A, and also the, the item that Commissioner Caban had brought up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm supporting the motion.
All right. Commissioners, I think we have consensus. Commissioner Proctor, you want to close this out here?
Yes, sir. Quickly, Mr. Chairman, I think that Commissioner Cummings' friendly amendment allows staff, it softens, it allows for soft negotiations to back and forth. And so she's put that negotiating element there, gives it flex. However, the critical thing I've heard today that
Uh, however, the critical thing I've heard today that sticks out in my mind is that, um, justification that we're running a deficit and, and we need some money, we're out of money. Then I hear the county administrator say, "No, they ain't got no deficit," that, that ain't true. That right there is a problem to me. And I don't want anybody, uh, leaning on us and we think that we're acting out of their need and there is abundance there. And that part in this negotiation, I don't ever want, uh, for that wider discretionary discrepancy, that they're justifying us giving them $1 million because they got a deficit and our administrator said they ain't got nothing like that. That, I leave this item, uh, troubled and disheartened by those disparate comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. All right, Commissioners, we've got a motion with some amendments that were approved. Commissioner Cummings, you were in there, are you good? You were in my queue for a minute after everybody. Were you? Okay. All right, perfect. All right, thank you. Um, all right, Commissioner, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, passes unanimously. Uh, next item pulled from consent, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this item is to award a bid, uh, for work at the Leon County Detention Center, the exterior stair renovations, phase two, uh, to the lowest responsive bidder. This item was pulled by Commissioner Caban, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Caban, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna pass this out to you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to move staff for recommendation, option one.
We've got a motion, is there a second? Second by Commissioner O'Keefe, we're in discussion, go ahead, Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I wanted to just point this out, I, I think it's worth us, you know, just having a conversation or, or, I requested from the sheriff's office over the summer, the current population from the Leon County Detention Facility, where every current inmate, or the, the current population in that snapshot in time, where they were from, where their residence is from. And I think it's important to, I, I know that the county, the, by state statute, the county runs, maintains and funds, uh, our Leon County Detention Facility. However, I think it's important to notate that, and I believe it was the two penny, in the original penny sales tax, Mr. County Administrator, correct me if I'm wrong, that the jail was funded from our sales tax because voters thought it was a, a community-wide infrastructure. What I'm seeing here is that the jail is used by everyone, including the city of Tallahassee, including folks, um, you know, from outside Tallahassee. And if you look at the population in there, only 21% of the current inmates, now, and it would be nice to also see an average, but reside in the unincorporated Leon County. However, Leon County floats the, Leon County taxpayers float the entirety of the bill. And so, I, I have a motion on the floor to accept it, but I think it's, it's worth having a conversation in the future to see, hey, how can we get some help on some of, on some of these renovation costs from the jail? This was built originally with the sales tax dollars because voters thought it was community-wide infrastructure. And, and now it's old, it's what, over 30 years old, Mr. County Administrator? So there's going to be some big renovation costs associated with it, and this is a community asset that is used by all governments. And I would like to see in the future, some way, somehow, us getting help from some other jurisdictions to help with some of these costs so that Leon County taxpayers aren't the only ones voting this bill. So, um, that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Caban. Commissioner O'Keefe, I've got you in discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Caban, for bringing this up. Um, population and the age, population of the detention center and the age of it, the cost of it is incredible part of our budget and, um, we need to be upfront about it. And this makes sense, um, to consider it, especially if it was historically considered as part of a sales tax. But I want to make sure that I understand correctly. We say that, I just want to confirm my understanding, that the cost of the operating and renovating in, in, of the detention facility, including this work, is paid out of the, uh, millage rate of all Leon County residents, including all of the Leon County residents who live within the city. So I don't want anyone to go away thinking that unincorporated residents are paying the whole bill. It's everybody who lives comprehensively within the county. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Keefe. Uh, Mr. Administrator, you're in my queue, which is so bizarre.
Sorry, that's just me hitting buttons.
I've never seen that.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioners, we've got a motion and a second. Uh, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes unanimously. Next item, Mr. Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, uh, item number 19 is interlocal agreement for the maintenance of landscaping on sections of Capital Circle. And, uh, the item recommends, uh, that you accept, uh, option one, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. This item was pulled by Commissioner Caban.
Commissioner Caban.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I would like to go with, um, option three, which is board direction. Want to try something, uh, different here? And instead of doing interlocal agreement, I would like to see if we can support, uh, a local business in our community and issue an RFP for the same dollar amount, uh, to perform the same duties of maintaining the, um, the landscaping of those sections in Capital Circle Southwest and Capital Circle Southeast.
All right, we've got a motion.
I'll second for purpose of discussion.
Okay, so Commissioner O'Keefe, seconds. Um, do you, are you?
Listen, my, my, this is.
You want to explain?
Yeah, my, my position here is, hey, we're, why not try to help local businesses and create more jobs and we have roughly $130,000 contract, you know? Why don't we try, this, this is what we should be doing, right? Let's, let's try to support small businesses, could be an opportunity to get some MWSB support as well. And if we don't get any bids, let's just move forward with the interlocal agreement. But I just, that's my opinion is, this is how we create more jobs in the community.
All right, Commissioner O'Keefe. Mr. Administrator, do you want to provide some clarity on that?
Absolutely, no, and, and, and we were, we will, again, if, certainly if that's the motion of the board, we'd be happy to do that, happy to receive that direction. I just had a logistical question for Brent, if he's available, Brent, if you're nearby. Just, and I totally understand where Commissioner Caban and the board may be going with this, and, and again, within the budget, all makes perfect sense, um, to see how that shakes out with vendors. Logistically, do you see any issues logistically in the work?
Uh, we did, uh, good evening Commissioners.
Yeah.
We did request some bids before we went to the city on this.
Is, is his microphone on?
Just speaking to the microphone there.
I'm sorry. Uh, we did reach out for some quotes for some local vendors. The one vendor that provided a complete quote was over $200,000 for the same line of work.
And, and my, my question wasn't about the funding, it was, it was about the logistics. It could, if we utilized vendors, I know the way that you, we've got segments scheduled, would you, would we, would we be able to handle that? I just wanted the board to know that prior to, to you going down that route.
Right. Uh, working with the city of Tallahassee does provide consistency amongst the maintenance. So if you have a separate contractor, parts will be maintained at other times, they'll start looking haphazard out there, which is a problem with DOT.
Just information, let me just qualify all that, uh, Commissioners, again, whatever the direction is, we, we'll go with it, we'll make it, we'll make it work. Just wanted you to have all the information, that's all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On point, Mr. Chair, just clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
He just indicated that they did go out. I, I didn't understand what he said, when he said for the same amount of work.
Yeah, just a little slower. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry about that. So DOT has a, uh, has guidelines of how it's to be maintained, their Capital Circle project. We put that out on the street for some bids. One vendor came back with a complete project at over $200,000, which is about 60,000 more than what the city is quoting us for the same.
Over $30,000 beyond what the city?
Sixty?
Sixty.
60,000 beyond the city's bid. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, Commissioner O'Keefe, you're in the queue, followed by Commissioner Proctor and Commissioner Cummings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, Brent, for clarifying that you looked out, looked out for bids. First, that's covers what my concern would be and, and part of why I seconded it. Um, and then, the other thing too is, it, I, surprises me I'm the one doing this, but I hesitate to do this 15 days before the new contract is supposed to happen, right? It's September 15th, and we're trying to approve a contract for work that would have to start October 1st. And so even if we had other bids that were cheaper, or that we needed to go get bids that were cheaper, I, one of the number one comments and requests we get is maintenance of right-of-way and, and clearing and the grass. And so I hesitate to switch up, um, with 15 days left before it comes up, and especially now knowing that the, um, cost was already compared. And so, um, based on both of those things addressing my concern, I'm going to withdraw my second.
All right, Commissioner Caban, the second has been withdrawn, is, so we need a second on Commissioner Caban's, well, you're, oh, you were on board direction, so it was board direction to put it out for bid instead of doing an interlocal, right?
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll, I'll supply.
Okay, Commissioner Proctor's got the second, and you are next in the queue, Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I think that, um, the RFP, uh, we could tease a response, uh, back toward, uh, this amount. Uh, what was disturbing here, um, some years ago, I thought, um, uh, we had the, uh, I thought the sheriff cut the grass, uh, out there, and we, we just gave the sheriff $10 million, uh, like two, three meetings ago, and we don't get the grass cut for $10 million? Uh, what is the nature of, uh, those, uh, at least the Campbell years of, of sheriff cutting the grass? Uh, what hindereth, uh, the sheriff from cutting the grass, um, as that occurred in years gone by?
Mr. Administrator, or Brent, you want to take a shot at that? We need that microphone on, man.
Is the mic on?
Yeah. Uh, we no longer get inmates from the Leon County Sheriff's Office for maintaining right-of-way.
We do not?
No, sir, we do not. We get inmates from Walcolor Corrections.
Walcolor County sends us their inmates.
Okay, um, in the Campbell years of sherifying in Leon County, uh, Campbells, uh, detainees, uh, cut grass, clean out ditches, uh, went out there on Lake Anita Davis, got in boats and got trash up out the lake. Vince, I'd like for us, if this passes, to discover why we got to go and import, uh, people from Walcolor who we don't feed. We paying people for $100 a day to sleep out there at, uh, McNeil's Hotel. And why is we going to Walcolor for Walcolor detainees to do, uh, cut the grass in Leon County? Uh, I mean, where do we send Leon County's detainees to Walcolor? I don't understand this. Uh, but all of that, uh, available workforce has been worked before, and, um, in the nature of helping the county maintain, uh, landscaping and so forth, uh, it, it has occurred before. Uh, secondly, uh, um, I believe that this agreement, um, you know, we paying the city to cut the grass, uh, we're paying the city in an interlocal, on fire services, um, we're paying the city in some other situations, and every time you turn around, you got to pay the city from fire services to cutting the grass. And, um, I'm just disturbed by, uh, continuing, uh, amassing of money that we pay, and I don't even know, uh, the cumulative, uh, contracts that we're in that position of paying the city for, um, for, uh, services that.
County Administrator has the answer, I think.
Just, just for clarification, this is limited to portions of Capital Circle that are maintained by the city. You, you may, obviously you know that, that this Capital Circle comes into the city and comes into the county in different areas. This just simply allows us to address those gaps, where you have a portion that is currently being maintained by the city. Again, from efficiency standpoint, it could make sense to have them maintain those portions and just those portions. Again, logistically, uh, this is something that we've done for many, many years.
Let me ask this one legal question, under the urban service area, uh, and the city's working inside the USA, would not, would, would they have some obligatory, um, obligation to serve, uh, and cut that grass if it's in the USA?
No.
They wouldn't? Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. All right, Commissioner Cummings, then Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner Maddox.
Uh, yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just need, I guess, a little bit more, uh, clarif- clarification from Mr. Brent. The RFP that was issued, it was issued for this particular contract year, was it 20, this year, last year?
Yes, ma'am, it was several months ago.
Several months ago for, for this specific?
Yes, these specific areas.
Okay, and we only had one responsive bidder?
One complete, it, it's hard to explain, they're the only ones who provided the full, comprehensive, all the work that's required by DOT. There was other ones that just quoted pieces of it, but no one provided a complete bid.
Mr. Administrator?
Now, and Brent, was that a, I'm sorry, ma- ma- madam Commissioner, was that a formal bid process?
No, it was not a formal, through the purchasing department, it was something I sent out for request.
Okay, thank you, that's what I thought, thank you.
Informal bid process, they just asked.
So, so DOT has guidelines, it has to be satisfied pursuant to the RFP that the county issues for this segment of Capital Circle Southwest and Southeast. And all those specifications was in the RFP, is what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so this contract is for 143,000 annually, so you're saying we had bids that came in $30,000 above, was it 60,000? So we're talking about 200 and something thousand?
That is correct.
For those two segments, Southwest and Southeast Capital Circle. The, do you know the, is the length measured by mileage, um, I guess, how long each one of those segments are?
It, it is done by mile post per DOT, it's about a total of just under four miles.
It's under four miles, put the two segments together?
Correct. But I understand the four miles would be, you know, four miles on each side of the road, so it's eight miles of, uh, shoulder, and then four miles of median, so it's, you know, close to 12 miles.
And then the, the segment that the city maintains is, you know, is, I guess, in the city limits, but it's in addition to the four miles that's pretty much in the county unincorporated area.
That is correct.
The city responded to the RFP as well?
No, ma'am, this was, uh, an existing contract we have with the city, this was the price to renew the contract.
Okay, so if we had gotten some responsive, uh, bidders that perhaps would have been less than what we were paying the city, we could have entertained that. But the city didn't, didn't have to respond because we already have an agreement with them. So they're pretty much grandfathered in.
We had an existing contract with the city that, that had happened to lapse.
An existing contract.
Okay, right, and how many years have we had this, this contract?
I don't have that from me, I'm thinking at least five years back.
The last five years?
At, at least.
Has the price increased each year, or is this the same initial price five years ago?
It does increase based on CPI typically.
It does not increase?
It does increase based on CPI typically, 47%.
Based on CPI?
Yes, CPI.
Okay, 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 alright, alright. And so, based on that, the county really can measure that and just unilaterally increase it, and the city agrees to that increase?
Uh, tip, yes, the, the city will submit an increase on the contract renewals and the county will agree to that.
$60,000 above what we are paying the city is, it'd probably be very difficult to find somebody.
No, it ain't.
That could come in and provide the services at the amount that the city, that we're paying the city. That's been our experience.
It, you never know who's going to bid.
And we only had one responsive bidder.
Yes, one complete response.
One complete response. And there were other responses, but they were deemed not complete.
Being this was not a formal process, I wouldn't say deemed incomplete, but they only selected pieces of what we requested the quote on.
Okay, okay. That's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. Commissioner Minor, then Commissioner Maddox, then Commissioner Proctor to bring it home.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, could, could you please restate the motion on the floor? I know there's been some changes to it.
The, the motion was to put out an RFP for the same dollar amount, to see if we get any bids that would match that amount and give an opportunity to give it to a small business.
Right. Wasn't there an amendment? Or that was it?
No, I think that withdrew the motion, or the second.
That's right, that's right. Okay, so, um, so the motion is to put out an RFP at the same price and see if we can get any bids. Um, it, it appears that we've, we've kind of already done that informally.
Correct.
Uh, so my question to Mr. Pell, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
If we were to go through a formal RFP process, in, in your, in your opinion, would in your opinion, would it be possible or likely that we might get bids that would be less than the amount that the city is willing to do the service for?
It's really challenging for me to, based on what I've seen, I don't know that we're going to see something lower than what the city has provided us in this contract.
Commissioner, you really can't answer that question?
That's hypothetical. You never know, it's a wild, wild west out there for lawn care.
So, I mean, of course, I mean, I, you know, the notion that, the idea of us going to the private sector and helping businesses and helping, you know, pay for jobs is a great one. The only, I guess the next question I have is like, if we were to do a formal RFP process, what would be the impact? Because the current contract is going to expire. It may be time before we have bids come in, if we get bids at all, and then, you know, executing the lowest bid in order to get the contract reinstated with a private sector provider. I mean, you're talking at least a couple of months, two or three months, in order to make that happen. I guess the next question I have, Mr. Pell, is, you know, what would be the impact on our obligation to FDOT if that were to take place?
What we would end up doing is assuming the responsibility with our own crews, typically putting them on basically overtime because this is above and beyond what we normally do for maintenance work.
Which incurs additional expense?
Yes, sir.
I understand the spirit of the motion. And I definitely understand the spirit of the motion. Based on what Mr. Pell has told us, and the informal RFP process that he went through, the fact that that quote, the only complete quote was $60,000 over, leads me to believe that I think that the contract with the city is probably the best way to go. Would it be best to have an RFP process and see if we get any private bids in a formal process? Yes, but should there be a break in a contract that provides service, we've got overtime with our own folks that probably incurs probably a higher cost than we would have anyway. So I'm going to vote against the motion for that reason, just because I think that in the end, it might end up costing us more. But we'll see what the will of the board is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Minor. Commissioner Maddox, you were in the queue, are you?
Yes.
You still in there?
Yes, sir.
Go for it.
As Commissioner Myers said, I understand the spirit of the motion. I think we're a little bit behind the eight ball here. And right now, it doesn't seem like the system is broke. I don't necessarily want to try to fix it. If this is something we're going to do, I think we should look at it maybe a year from now. Brent, Mr. Bell, you said, so when you say it's informal, what you just asked around, like, how did you go about assessing whether or not we'd be able to find something cheaper?
I obtained some names from our purchasing department and reached out to them via email, providing the specifications.
I mean, I made you reach out to?
Three.
Three. Are they pretty reasonable businesses that you reached out to, you should say so?
Two of them absolutely. The third one was a previous vendor the county had used for other contract maintenance we'd had.
Again, understanding the spirit of the motion and what you were trying to do, Commissioner Command, I don't think it's the right timing for us to consider it right now. And given staff's attempt to ask around three vendors that are reputable in the city and knowing that they're $60,000 above where we are right now, I'm going to go ahead and make the substitute motion for staff recommendation, which is option one. Again, if we want to do this in the future, I'm not opposed to putting out a formal RFP, capping the number at what we think the lowest bid would be. But even if we put out the RFP, I still think the lowest bid would be this $143. And then can you cap an RFP by dollar amount, Mr. Administrator?
We can do a hard bid.
Yeah, yeah. So I think I'm going to sit where I'm at with this sort of staff recommendation, but I do understand the spirit and look forward to maybe us trying something like that in the future. But right now, I don't think it's broken enough to try to fix it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, we've got a substitute motion from Commissioner Maddox for staff recommendations, seconded by Commissioner Minor. Commissioners, I got three of you in the queue, and we're going to take a recess at 5:30. So if we can try to wrap this up by then, and then that's going to leave us one on consent and general business and public hearing after that. So, oh, I'm sorry, public hearing then those others. So Commissioner Proctor, you're in the queue, then Commissioner Cummings, then Commissioner Command.
Mr. Chairman, I refuse to believe that we can't find somebody to cut this grass for $12,000 a month. It's $144,000 contract. And Mr. Brent has, I can get workers that work for him. Men will retire from Leon County for $12,000 a month to cut the grass over there on that street. This is crazy. We got an Office of Economic Vitality, the Office of Economic Development, blah, blah, blah. And I'm not sure what the Hispanic Office of Workers and so forth. But I'm telling you, I will find somebody, I know somebody who will cut this grass for $12,000 a month. And if you rush us over to the city for $60,000 more, that's $18,000 a month to cut the grass up there on Capital Circle. We can cut all the grass in the South Side. Four, five, seven neighborhoods don't cost $18,000? This is not making sense. And we really ought to give our Office of Economic Vitality to do something for the small business person. But I wish you all would walk with me and trust this commissioner. I promise you, if we put this on the street, I'll find some men that will cut this grass for $12,000 a month. That is $3,000 a week. I know men would do this for even less. But we're saying that in our community, we can't find a man, team, that'll cut grass for $12,000 a month. That just, I know we sophisticated, but this ain't Las Vegas, we ain't that far up. So Commissioner Maddox, I don't know what, you know, your reservations would be, but I think Commissioner Command was given a chance, us a chance, to put our money where we say our mouth is and to help small business person. And I like to know how much money we paying the city to cut the grass. This is unreasonable, this is excessive, this is far too much. $18,000 worth of grass cutting, that's just unbelievable. But I promise this commissioner, I put all the money in Commissioner Minor's pocket. I put all of it on the line and bet you.
I don't want any of your money.
No, I'm putting your money up, that I can find a yard man to cut that specific amount. And in your workforce, Mr. Brent, I could find six of them in the morning. I'd take them from you, they're equipped for $12,000 a month to cut grass. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Proctor. Commissioner Cummings?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, very briefly. I understand the Commissioner Command's sentiment. I certainly, being a small business myself, haven't been. I believe in supporting our businesses in the community, whether it's small or large. I certainly believe that. But I agree with Commissioner O'Keefe that, you know, time is of the essence. And I believe if we're looking at starting a contract in October, this is September, I believe we have time to do anything beyond what's recommended here. However, I think that we could agree that next year, we have a formal RFP. Or if we wanted invitation to bid, I think we could do it open handed. But I think the county attorney and county administrator could address that. But as Commissioner Proctor indicated, I have had, and probably still have, I guess, a client who does cutting on ITN, contract for work. His contract is $60,000 a year, 60. He had the contract, it might have expired now. And I do believe he would be willing to do this work that is altogether under four miles for both segments. If he was aware of an RFP on the street, I promise you, and he has the big equipment, employees, what have you, he would be willing to bid on this contract. So even though I certainly understand the sentiment, I think it's just a little too late for us as the commission to do anything beyond what staff recommendation is. But I think moving forward, we can certainly, as a commission, suggest that we have a formal, not just calling this person and that person, but have a formal request for proposal, put it on the streets. And I do believe we will have some legitimate responses that wouldn't be $200,000.
Thank you, Commissioner Cummings. The county attorney would like to jump in. Go ahead.
Just want to remind the board that what's contemplated in the draft agreement and your agenda materials is an initial term of two years for this contract, and that we then automatically renew for two additional two-year terms unless either party gives notice of non-renewal with 30 days prior to the expiration. So there have been some comments about maybe we want to go out next year to do a competitive procurement, but the initial term is two years.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can we adjust it? We can?
Commissioner Maddox, you're not in the queue right now.
It's my motion.
It's your, oh, okay.
Staff recommendation with the amendment that the contract goes to one year, and we look at bidding out a formal RFP next year?
A second.
Were you the?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Who, Mr. Mayor, okay. All right, before we go to Commissioner Command, and I got Commissioner Proctor, Commissioner Maddox again. I like the idea. I agree, I think the timeline's a little tight. I, as somebody who ran a lawn mowing business until the night I was elected to the county commission, has probably got more time on a weed eater than most people in this building. I can tell you that, yes, Commissioner Proctor, for $12,000 a month, a weekend warrior like Brian Welch, who's a high school teacher, would probably like the idea of bidding on that. I think the problem is the mercurial nature of even doing it. The regular people don't know how to do it, don't know how to bid, don't know how to be legitimate. You got to have insurances and all that stuff, right? But I mean, you can, like, even Weekend Warrior has that. But I think it just takes a little time. So I think ideally, principally speaking, I like where you're at, right? Like, if we could make more of our mowing contracts available, I think that's a good thing, if we made it easier for people to know how to get them and make sure they knew how about. You got to have insurance, you got to have maintenance on those machines. Commissioner Proctor, stuff's expensive. So I get it, but for, you know, if somebody who could really do it, it's, there's a lot of value there for small businesses. So I think the timing is just not right on this one, Commissioner Command, but I can support Commissioner Maddox's amended motion. And then also, I think, maybe ask staff in the future, when we have these, you know, if it's four miles of road somewhere or a mile of road somewhere, if we, you know, where we have interlocal agreements, if we can make that process easier for small guys to get after that, I think that would be good. All right, Commissioner Command, back to you, and then Commissioner Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, I think that is very fair of like the position the board is taking. Commissioner Proctor, I do think that's fair. Commissioner Maddox, I appreciate you accepting the friendly amendment earlier. My thing here is just the spirit of how we go about governing with things like this, when we have to put contracts out like this. I think anytime we have the ability to do an RFP, to let small businesses bid on it, right? We're giving taxpayer dollars back to taxpayers. I think that that should be the spirit of what we're looking at doing before we do an intergovernmental or inter-agreement with another agency. And so I'm going to support Commissioner Maddox. I'll withdraw my initial motion, and I'll support Commissioner Maddox's substitute motion.
I do have a quick question for staff.
Sure.
I think you make an excellent point. I had someone call me the other day, and they were looking to bid on something. It was one of our RFPs, and they were talking about the bonding. And he had to put down the bonding, had to put down like 50 grand or something like that, right? For the average small business that's cutting our yards, or Brian Welch, who's the teacher, that ain't happening. Mr. Administrator, is there even a way for us to look at lowering those bonding thresholds for smaller projects like this, so smaller vendors can come in? Or are we kind of, or are our hands tied?
Mr. Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, it's just driven by the nature of the work. And the inherent, you know, danger, complexity, or what might, what have you, particularly on Capital Circle.
Yes.
Some of it changes, but we understand the spirit of what the board has expressed tonight, and we can take that and run with it.
Do you need direction for us, to bring us back something to look at, lowering the bonding threshold and making it easier for small contracts, for smaller vendors to be able to?
I think that would be good, that way we could formalize that.
I'll amend my motion for agenda item to come back to look at how we might modify the bidding process so that the threshold of bonding and other things are not such that smaller, small companies are exempt or are not able to bid. Or even looking at the bidding process and its complexities, and how we might be able to make it easier for small businesses to bid. In that agenda item too, can we contemplate a workshop? Not a workshop for us, but a workshop for small businesses to learn how to bid and what the bidding process is in Leon County, specifically for those smaller, small businesses?
All right, Commissioner Minor, you good with that amendment?
Yes, I'm good with that amendment.
All right, we got a motion and a second. I can tell you just off Commissioner Maddox, it was not hard for me to get insurance, because I did do some commercial jobs. But I don't know about bonding at the government level, it's probably maybe different. But I got Commissioner Proctor, then Commissioner O'Keefe, and we're going to vote for this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had two points, and I think that Commissioner Maddox expressed them well, our need to expand civic education, which ought to include how to do business with your local government. Civic competency, how to do business with your local government. And for learning how to get a contract to cut the grass, if that's beyond the reach and understanding of John Q. Public, then our Office of Economic Vitality needs to be repurposed. It's good to go out to Amazon, check the block, it's good to go get Wawa, check the block. But we need to be able to go get John Q. Yardman as well. And we need to create a small business department, small business unit in the Office of Economic Vitality to look at these type measures which are attainable for the small person, just needing the information, knowledge that Commissioner Cummings advises her clients all the time on how to reach into. And then finally, I was just curious as to how much does the city, not looking at the overhead and looking at the machines and cost of gas, but the people that actually cut the grass, the grass cutters, does the city pay them $143,000 a year? I doubt it. So their people would be highly motivated, cut this grass. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Very, very quickly, just wanted to say for the record, our OEV department has extremely active engagement with the small business community. They've got programming that goes year round. In addition, they very actively manage our set aside programs, where we're matchmaking businesses with contracts. And so it's very extensive, but we hear you and will make every effort to redouble our efforts.
All right, Commissioner Proctor, you good?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner O'Keefe, you going to close us out?
Gladly. Quick question for staff. Is the reason we had an agreement with the city in this section because it's our practice to outsource landscaping? Or is it because the road sort of zigzags in and out? And if we didn't, we were sort of doing it to let the city do it all, where when we do it and they do it separate, it'd be like my neighbor and me, you know, crisscrossing each other? Or is it because it's a practice of us to outsource this work?
It is, it is the, I can't remember if it was the former or the latter that you said, but it's the practice of the nature of the work going inside and outside for the consistency and the efficiency of that.
All right, commissioners, we've got a motion and a second. I think everybody understands what those are. All those in favor, signal I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. We are going to be in recess until 6 o'clock for our public hearing.